I don't need it.
Yeah.
The way.
I know, I should have read it. I thought she was gonna say something else.
Are we getting it?
No. It's possible. You should buy a school awareness study for sure. She did for sure. She really. I have to be honest with you.
Hey, how are you doing? We can get out of here at half five and a half. Okay? And I got to pick up the car.
She's like any river maybe.
Some people do right.
Front row.
Yeah.
But it's just.
Calling the meeting to order. Um, let me type that. Okay. I, uh, welcome to the last, to last paragraph. City of Susanville, City Council meeting for June 17th. Um, we are going to say the pledge and then we're going to stand for invocation. So if you'd like to stand for the, uh, for the. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you can stand for this with the invocation, would you like? Almighty God, we pray this day for your ever enduring guidance. We ask you to cover us with wisdom, give us a sense for the true needs of the people of Susanville, and the ability to govern those needs. Amen. Chair, uh, is there any agenda? Is that the action report on this session?
Direction given.
Okay. Is this from the floor? Any person may address the council at this time upon any subject. Hold on, I have to back up. Okay, so we have a proclamation, but it wasn't on my list, so, um, I want, I want Gwyneth McDonald to come up. Yeah, I'm gonna, uh, read this up there.
Do you guys want to stand with us? She forced all in.
Yeah, that's true.
And then.
I wasn't sure what we were doing.
She's been here forever.
Yeah.
It just seems like it. Ryan's been here longer. Ryan's been here longer.
Segura.
Okay. Okay, Gwyneth, I'm going to read this to you.
I'm using that too.
Gwyneth McDonald started her career with the City of Susanville Administrative Services Department on July 3rd, 2000. And she worked as a secretary for the Administrative Services Department from July 2000 until January 2002, where she promoted to the building permit technician. And Gwyneth McDonald began working as an administrative assistant in July 2002. And she promoted to the administrative assistant for grants management in May 2004. And Gwyneth McDonald held the additional duty of the deputy city clerk by appointment. And she promoted to city clerk in June 2012. The City of Susanville greatly recognizes Gwyneth McDonald, Gwyneth McDonald's 20 years of service to our community. And the City of Susanville, I present her with this proclamation of achievement for her service and wish her a happy retirement. Thank you very much.
Speech, speech.
Speech, guys. I'm not the speech type. Okay, now move on to business from the floor. Any person may address the council at this time upon any subject on the agenda or not on the agenda within the jurisdiction of the city council. However, comments on items on the agenda may be reserved until the item is discussed. And any matter not on the agenda that requires action will be referred to staff for a report and action at a subsequent meeting. Presentations are subject to a five minute limit. Are there any comments from the public? No? Okay.
Yep. Hi, Melanie Westbrook. Um, I just kind of had a comment to make about, um, your permit process and the disconnect between City Hall and Public Works. So what I've been running into a lot lately is we go down to City Hall, you try to pull permit, they tell you one thing, all good, you go, you get signed off. Well, turns out Public Works never saw it, so then you have to go over to Public Works and use something else. Like it's super not streamlined and not effective and makes it a little difficult. Um, even, even in such, I do a lot of work in management, so I'm constantly changing, um, you know, water, gas, back and forth. We'll do a new, a new change, we'll call Public Works, they're like, oh, call City Hall, City Hall told you to call Public Works. And then you call back and it's like, oh, it's sitting on his desk. So the process is a huge disconnect between those two entities talking to each other. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
Mr. Lightfoot?
Yes, um, could I reserve commentary till, uh, maybe I can leave?
I don't need to. Oh, okay. Yes, yes, sir. Okay, then, council, we're gonna move on to the consent calendar. Number six. All matters listed in the consent calendar are considered to be retained by the city council. There will be no separate discussion on these items. Any member of the public or the city council may request removal of an item from the consent calendar to be considered separately. Looking for a motion to approve the consent.
Motion to approve?
Send it.
All favor.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Moving on to item eight, which is council discussion. Council?
Yeah, I have three items I'd like to bring up, like, in an hour later.
Do you mean it?
I'd like to, uh, request, uh, three items on the agenda, please, if we have the first council's support. Number one, I'd like to request that, uh, staff bring back to council options, uh, to empower our finance department with a newer finance database. Uh, something, I think it might be perfect timing. And, uh, so that's, that's number one. I don't have any to request council's support.
Can I just ask quite a lot? When you say that, are you talking about, so, uh, we use CACEL right now? Are you talking about bring options back to?
Replace.
A different, okay, a different financial.
Yeah. Do I have two others to go with council's support on it?
Uh, I think we just need one other council member to agree, making it go on. I believe we're all right.
Yeah, I'd like to see some other options as well.
Okay, so something else, although this is constantly being discussed, we have, uh, we may not even have our compositions at this point, I'm not sure. But if we do, uh, I'd like to suggest that we basically do a hiring freeze, uh, at least until we sign in somebody or determine whoever's going to be the city administrator. So maybe it'll allow us to save money from down until then, and also whoever's gonna be running the show will have hopefully a stronger say in that person.
So, Mr. Port, uh, three meetings ago, I believe, uh, council member staffer brought that up. He asked about freeze, uh, Madam Mayor, um, recommended other language, the majority of the council, um, by the slings recommendation was that any position that is open, that we, we are prepared to recruit, you know, fly, recruit, fly, go through a process and hire, comes back. So we've done that. And so if you want to deviate from that, then I, I mean, it's, it's council's pleasure, but at the last meeting, that was not the direction that I received.
I, I think I would like to deviate from that a little bit, you know, just basically putting everything on, on pause until, until we make a determination on the city administrator.
Okay, so what I would do is if you have a second council member that wants to, uh, agree to that, which I'm sure there is, um, but, uh, I would bring it back to July 1 on the, uh, do I have a second?
Chair. Oh, thanks, guys.
I love your number third thing.
So, so the third, the third thing is I think, you know, we're facing, we're looking at budget challenges and whatnot. On one hand, you're either looking at we're gonna run out of money in X amount of time, or we're gonna run, run out of money in X plus one amount of time. And so, uh, I think it would improve for us to be proactive than bringing, uh, prepare, uh, to hire somebody designated strictly to either A, write grants or have full time, somebody who focuses on grants, not similar to a project manager where they also become the third assistant to the city administrator, but somebody who's just focused on bringing in money. So let's see, uh, that brought back, but also not make the hire till, or even if we make the hire, tell the city administrator.
Okay, there's a second council member who wants to come back.
Do you have like full time grant writing?
Um, I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand that, that the number two item is you want to hire and freeze, number three, you want to hire.
Yeah, that's.
I understand the purpose of this board.
I, I would like to see a volunteer to grant writing. If we have some volunteers and people want to do it, because we want the money to pay for another presentation.
But we can bring it back and talk about it.
Okay, I will bring it back to July 1.
Is that all council members? Okay. Any other council members? Okay, I had, I had something that I wanted to talk about, and that was, uh, we went through a, um, training with Margaret Long, our attorney, and she, she, I, I asked her a question during the training, and it's out on, um, it was live stream, so I know everybody knows about it. But my family owns a service station in town, and it's my dad and my uncle. And I was told by her first attorney that I, every time the city had to use Jackson Service Center, that I had to recuse myself. So for the longest time, I took time, I recused myself, I got up, I left the room whole thing. Then our city attorney said, no, all you have to do is abstain. So for the longest time, I abstained. And then along came Margaret, and she said, let's take you straight to the top of the food chain for this question. So I went to the Fair Political Practices Commission, sent, uh, email to them, told them the whole story. They sent back a letter that says that I do not have to retain, I do not have to recuse myself or abstain, because my, my immediate family has no financial interest in the business, nor do I. So with that said, I'm going to go ahead and vote on Jack, if Jackson Service Center shows up. However, if you want to see the letter in its entirety, because I'm not gonna take time to read it all, I have filed it with the city administrator's office, and you are welcome, anybody can see it any time. They, I can even get copies of it if you wanted, so I just wanted to, to make you guys aware of that. That was it.
I do. Uh, Madam Mayor, I, I do have something, I'm sorry, I, uh, and so I don't know, um, what he'll be, if you're gonna be able to do this. But I would, I would prefer to, um, see every single item, uh, that the city is currently renting or leasing, um, and brought back in, and, so separate from the finances, um, I would like to see everything that we are leasing or renting at this time to further evaluate, to see if we can, um, cut some of that cost, brought back to you, and that is it. Thank you.
You have a second on that, Chris?
Yeah, I have one. So that one is gonna be a little harder to get for July 1, because, yeah, we, we kind of started, uh, trying to do a deadline on, on Friday prior to the week prior, uh, for the agenda, so we're not scrambling like we are, uh, on Thursday, Friday. So again, your deal's coming on July 1, but if it's on July 1, it'll be on, uh, July 50.
That's perfect, I just wanted to process.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, so we're moving on to item 9A, which is considering approval of vendor warrants. So I am looking for a motion to receive and file those warrants.
Push and receive and file. Second?
All favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 9B is resolution number 20-573, and it's a team. We have Kevin Jones, Deborah Savage, James Moore, and Dan Gibbs. Is that right?
Take the floor. This is yours.
That is good. We did a team, okay. So before you, we had two, thank you, council members, we have received, we've had two budget workshops where we brought where what we think our revenue for next year is going to be, and unfortunately, our expenses are going to be. And this is the big, great element, and the budget is not here. With COVID-19, we are expecting quite a few of our revenues to be down, but our expenses are not down. In fact, they're up. So we, we're reading before you, the budget was presented in the budget workshops with a deficit spending, 23,000 in administrative services, 517,000 in public safety police, and 295,000 in public safety fire. As I said in the past, it is not a good practice to spend more than you are bringing in. It is dangerous, and it's going to catch up with us. I've also attached the budget policies, because we are amending those to remove the inference to out-of-borough fires. We're going to ask that the fire department be allowed to keep any money from out-of-borough fires and help them with their first costs. To amend or bypass any of the budget policies that have been adopted by council, it is a four-fifth vote. So when you vote on this agenda, I'm, I'm gonna ask for a four-fifth vote to amend the budget policy to remove the out-of-borough fires. And if you adopt the budget, a four-fifth vote on that, because you are bypassing item number one of the policies, to have a balanced budget each year. So I'll turn it over to you.
What items have we not adopted?
If you do not adopt a budget by July 1, the finance department stops cutting checks.
Okay, so we don't want to stop the city?
Without approved appropriation, we are not authorized.
So also, if we, are, are we almost supposed to adopt budgets on regular, uh, weekly?
You cannot be wrong, especially.
So if we don't adopt it today, we have to bring it back at some point after no checks are cut. Well, it'll be on July 1, I guess, or later than that. So we have a choice essentially. If we want the city to stay open, we adopt the budget, whether we like it or not. If we want to shut down the city, we don't pass the budget, whether we like it or not. So the question is, do we want to keep the city open or not?
That's the question for you. And you have to remember, the budget is a living document. You can change it at any time. Once it's adopted, you can come back and say, staff, make cuts, bring it back. We're going to adopt this, but here's your direction. That's why we have mid-year review. We can have a quarterly review instead of just a mid-year review. But without an adopted budget in place July 1, the city will no longer catch up.
So, um, in my personal opinion, I say we pass it, because it doesn't hinder our process or our, um, ability to, to cut where we will need to at the end of the year.
Council?
I, I just want to make you stay. We did the same process last year. We were deficit spending last year. Same thing, we gotta pass a budget or we shut down. Now we're in the same position this year, but we're down 800,000 instead of whatever was 200 or 800 last year. We're just kicking it down the road, we're not doing anything to fix the budget. We're just saying, oh, we use reserves, we're all good. You know, I don't have a problem passing the budget if we're gonna do anything to reel out of it and make some kind of cuts or something, but we're not. We sit up here and nothing gets done. It's, it's, frankly, it's, it's a joke. We're not making any cuts. We're 200,000, 800,000, we lost 600,000 last year. I mean, you can't keep going this way with the city and think you're gonna stay open. And the only way to do that, and people don't like it, but cuts is the only way you're gonna save money.
We have true numbers yet on what the actual deficit budget ended up being last year. That we talked about it in the budget meetings here. The police department is probably gonna end up in the black where we were about 400,000 down last year. The fire department is gonna be 100,000 down, you're gonna end up in the black. But we don't have, when we have any.
You won't have those three numbers till probably August, when you have your invoices and things coming that you have to recruit back. The budget itself, whether the deficit budget is not the concern, it's the cash we have on hand. When I ran the cash for general fund this morning, we're at $700,000. That's depreciation, right?
No.
No, man. Governmental funds do not depreciate. Okay. Okay, so, so I, I, I like the idea of quarterly reports. I need to see more line items, because like, you know how, how we get these? I don't know where we really are. I, I mean, you understand. Okay, so, so I would agree with quarter, looking at the quarterly, but I need to see line items, Vince, what's really going on? You would be happy to bring that to you, but remember, it's the council. You would adopt the budget as a fund level, not a line item level. Well, well, but, but, wouldn't that happen, like, like, right now, I know what I'm looking at, but I have never seen, okay, so like, I've never seen, give me one, uh, any of them, to where they, they take, so like, I'm on the police department right now, so the police department. I've never seen a line item budget where they go across and say, we bought a car, we did this, we did that. I think it's important for us to see that, and that, you know, where we are right now with our budget, we need to see every. You know what? I'd be happy to bring that. I'm not the guy who wants to. That's what I want. Oh, I'll go to you guys.
Yeah, that's, that's part of the reason I want to see different software, it would include, it would make it easier for us to actually see the same reports and share with the community and all that stuff. Everything every single one of us is saying is we, we want to see some more, you know, some more problem solving and whatnot, not just giving the women. We believe that this community can actually somehow save itself, because if we can't, then, I mean, I'd be interested to know if anybody at all would care if we did just shut down the city. If we can't, why not do it now, and we still have money in the bank?
And if I may ask, Mr. Port, how do you think software has been fixed that?
Well, when we have the ability to forecast or presentation, it can be shared on the web, or she's asking about line items, new software, I can log on on my phone and see what I have access to. You can, Kevin can, she can, everyone's speaking, we can, we on our website. New software will change everything. I, I appreciate that we probably have the cheapest software out there, but it's the most antiquated thing that I've ever seen. And so having the work with it, seeing it, new software will give us the tools to actually say, okay, Kevin Scott, but I appreciate your request to cut the costs, here's what we do if we plug those in. I can now project and, and show and display a forecast four years out, one and a half years out, 10 years out, and he can say, oh, I like that idea, or I don't. And then we can plug in and say, if we put somebody dedicated to grant writing, we can adjust the odds, 10% that they get the grant, 1%, 27%, whatever it is, but we can see reports, compare them to each other. And most importantly, share with the community. We, we, we rely on all of us to take our gut feeling based on information and say we're, we're having a deficit, and then we have to make the hard decisions to cut. So if we cut, then guess what? That means we run out of money in three years instead of two years. So again, who really cares if it's an extra year? If we're not inviting services and nobody cares, why not, why not turn the city off right now? So new software will empower us to actually reach heights that we didn't make, you know, otherwise no existence. You know, it's like, you know, I'm gonna go back on that. When we first started cutting wood, for example, we had somebody with an axe, and then they had a saw, and then they had a chainsaw, and now you've got tractors, and we've got logging trucks and trains, and we just keep using the tools and technologies to further advance our humanity and everything we've accomplished. Why stay? It's 2020, we can get with the times, we can do things that on our phones, that our accounting software currently cannot. And I'm, just because it could also do the work, but maybe it would require three people instead of five people, I'm also not suggesting to get rid of those people, I think they're amazing, there's plenty of other things we can do, but.
And I just wanted to make a, instead of passing staff or something like that, wouldn't it be better to wait, do you want to be against rates and that? And let them be involved in that kind of decision?
I, either way, you know, we, we want to see problem solving, we, we've got numbers that we look at, and then, and then we don't want to turn staff against council against the community, we should all have one collaboration, one family, one like, hey, let's get in this together, let's problem solve. Instead, it's like, here's a problem, you gotta deal with it, and it's fine, yes, it's a problem, but oh, that, that's been a long time ago, and now we just have to use our brains. So however we do that, I think it's, it's all our responsibility. Anybody who lives here, this is our home, we've got so many issues, everybody here, I've talked to every single person here about something different. And we can hobble around in circles, and that's just it, we come back to where we were. But if we do something different, at least the results make a difference. If we do something, at least we're not gonna be doing nothing. So that's what software brings to the table. But other than this, whether we shut down the city or not, uh, and if we pass it, yeah, quarterly reports, I definitely want to see proactive involvement. We, we, we're, you guys, nobody's the enemy here, we want to actually inspire you to get out of the box and just think, hey, this is how we can actually do something great, because we can. I've worked with these, these awesome people, and they're smart, everybody here, they've got ideas, we just need to do something.
So to kind of just end on, on that note, it's just that, you know, the golf course, two, you know, a month ago, I agreed with you, and, and look what the community's already done, because they banded together. So, so my reply to the $800,000 deficit is it's not just your responsibility to figure it out, right? A lot of pressure is put on you, and, and I'm, and for that, I apologize. However, we need problem solving, we need community members to come up with ideas, we need to band together to figure it out, because that's the difference between a small town and a big city. In big city, there's chaos, and here, we can control that and say, no, we're not gonna do that, we're gonna do this, we're gonna band together and get things done. And so to that deficit, I can tell you, I can promise you that I, just me myself alone, I'm working on 20 different projects to pitch to this council and to you guys, um, to, to, to move forward, to, um, kind of decline, hopefully, uh, break even, or, um, you know, uh, to get out of this deficit. And so I agree with you, Gavin, um, I don't want to repeat the old mistakes of the past, I cannot attest to the last 10 years, but I can tell you what's gonna happen in the future, um, and, uh, I haven't yet, so, uh, I would just encourage everybody to really, uh, problem solve, to really try to move forward on getting out of this. And I just want you to know that I'm not ignoring you in any way, um, and I'm taking it very seriously, um, and I agree with you, actually, I agree with everybody that everybody just said, um, but we gotta problem solve, or we're going to do.
I would agree with both of you two. We have a spending problem, we spend more than we bring in, it's, it's not, you know, brain surgery, we need to cut that spending somehow. And the only way to do that is, is unfortunately, probably cuts. I mean, there's no other way around it. You know, I mean, people can get warm and fuzzy and whatever they want to be, but the bottom line is, person cuts is the only way to do it.
Any other questions, council? Does the public have any questions regarding this item?
Yeah, this would be great opportunity to hear from anybody, anybody. I see somebody with a hand raised.
Uh, I'm probably the newest member of this community. Hi, my name is Daniel, this is my wife, this is my daughter, Victoria. Well, we come from a pretty big city, we fell in love with what's going on up here, and, uh, we want to be a part of the community. We are actually potential investors reinvesting our money that we're acquiring from this town back into the town. I want to know, I hear deficits and I hear the cuts, I've seen it in other situations, cuts are definitely the start, but how is, how are you guys gonna bring in more revenue without changing anything? Um, there's a lot of people that are bringing their, are earning their money here and taking it to Reno and to any other place. How are we keeping that money in the city, in our town, so we could circulate it back and actually start making revenue? Because you go an hour, what is it, an hour east, it's west? I don't know which way I am right now, but you go an hour away, and you could acquire different kind of foods, there's dispensaries, which is now pretty much legal almost anywhere. Uh, there's, I mean, you name it, it's out there, and all those things make a lot of money. And I come back to town and I kind of see the same old, same old, and the same old, kind of circulating, um, what incentives, or what is this town doing to kind of bring new investment back into the community? Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I guess. I don't want to, but I will. Um, you know, it was brought to the planning commission, I'm on the, I'm on the planning commission, and one thing that we see, and I'm waiting actually for a, a response to one of my issues, I don't really want to bring it up, because I don't want to kick it for instance. Um, is making it easier to either remodel or refurbish. how is, how are you guys going to bring in more revenue without changing anything? Um, there's a lot of people that are bringing their, are earning their money here and taking it to Reno and to any other place. How are we keeping that money in the city, in our town, so we could circulate it back and actually start making revenue? Because you go an hour, what is it, an hour east, it's west, I don't know which way I am right now, but you go an hour away, and you could acquire different kinds of foods, there's dispensaries, which is now pretty much legal almost anywhere. Uh, there's, I mean, you name it, it's out there, and all those things make a lot of money. And I come back to town and I kind of see the same old, same old, and the same old kind of circulating, um, what incentives or what is this town doing to kind of bring new investment back into the community? Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I guess. I don't want to, but I will. Um, you know, it was brought to the planning commission, I'm on the, I'm on the planning commission. And one thing that we see, and I'm waiting actually for a, a response to one of my issues, I don't want to bring it up because I don't want to kick it for instance, um, is making it easier to either remodel or refurbish or build in the city. So for purpose, I had a client that's purposely going to build in the county, because it's so much easier to build in the county. When we had a perfectly good line in town that they wanted to build on, but by the time, all the fees and all the costs and all the permits, I'm $20,000 into permits before I even cut dirt. Um, and so what the county's allowing and what the city has decided as public engineering, planning, whoever has made that decision, um, it's, it's, it's forcing people into the county, so you're losing. Right?
Thank you. Anyone else?
I, I just had a couple of questions, and, uh, one of them is, um, do we know, I, I know you have projected numbers, do you know what our projected deficit will be come June or, or do we have?
Not yet.
Okay, another projected.
Estimating around $300,000.
For the whole year, so it's jumping from eight to eight.
I'm sorry, I don't think, I, I, maybe I didn't ask that correctly, because you said jumping from eight to three.
Eight is. Eight is next year.
There's nothing else, counsel? I'm looking for a motion to approve resolution number 20-5783.
We need a roll call.
Sure. Counsel member McCourt?
Okay, I'm going to press that, I'm going to really get that to suspense. Oh, wow. Are we able for you, after, do you have a, uh, yes or no, can you do that on something now?
No, you have to say yes or no, you guys can't have conversation after the call to vote, so you have to say yes or no.
Oh, sorry, 10 more. Oh, let's keep the city open.
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Counsel member Mara?
Yes.
And counsel member Stafford?
Yes.
Mary, vote them more.
Yes.
Counsel member, or excuse me, Mayor.
Yes.
And I apologize, if you have a motion in the side.
I asked for a motion, and then they asked.
I need the motion, then they ask for the. I'll send it over.
I didn't hear a second, I did, or so.
Okay, Stafford, second.
Okay.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Are you, are you next? Or mine, I'm really.
Okay, so that's four, so 9D is also Debbie, and that is resolution number 20-5784.
All right, each year this, um, we are required to take out from the constitution to set our appropriations limit. And in just plain language, what this means is we are setting a limit on the amount of taxmen that our local government can legally spend. So we cannot spend more than our appropriation limit calculation. We are estimated this year to bring in $5,047,000 in taxmen. Our appropriation limit is 12 million. Look at the difference, look at that gap. So that's telling us, we actually have a quid pro quo in case we ever do get lucky enough to pass a sales tax increase or. So we are asking for you to adopt resolution 20-5784. These calculations come from the Department of Finance each year, they tell us the difference between the change in population and the per capita personal income, and this is also part of our audit at the end of each year. So we're looking for, looking for a motion to.
Okay, counsel, questions? Comments? Public, do you guys have any questions or comments? Okay, so, I'm looking for a motion.
Yeah. Motion to approve, uh, resolution 20-5784.
Do we have a second?
I think.
All in favor? Motion carries.
Okay, so moving on to 9D, it's resolution number 20-575.
Uh, thank you. This is the prospect that we thought of the idea of doing an interfund loan, borrowing cash from the natural gas system to pay off our per side fund. Challenging an interest rate based on length, that way the city is not going to paying itself back in interest, it's saving money. We've shown that it could be about $400,000 savings if you go with this. There's been a question of, why don't we just, um, stay with Unco Bank and reset our interest rate? We can do that, if that's an option that the council wants to do. But it means you're going to have to pay the 4.75% interest rate for another year before you can refinance it. We won't know in a year what the interest rate is going to be, but I'm sure it's going to be quite a bit more than 2.4%. So what we would be doing is borrowing this cash from the natural gas, pay off that side fund. Then the streets, general fund, water, um, and public works administration would be responsible to pay back to the natural gas fund each year, and that amount will be principal and interest. The natural gas portion of that side fund that we're paying off will just be paid off, so it's not going to pay itself back. So this is a way to actually help you save money. If you decide you don't want to do this, you want to wait one year and see if you can, uh, redo the interest rate during the reset period with Unco Bank, that deficit you see that you just got through is going to go up, because the budget reflects the savings for borrowing money and having a lower, a lower debt service payment. So I will turn it over to counsel, improve your thoughts.
Questions, counsel?
Appreciate it.
Okay.
It's common sense to me.
And the numbers that were presented in the resolution, we are going to update them, because I got the final numbers from Unco, if we pay it off as of Friday, and it's an actual $21,000 savings compared to what the numbers are paid off.
Counsel, anyone?
Okay, so I have, I got a text from somebody who wants remaining anonymous, and I'm always very careful to do that, although if I were him, I would want to be known for this, because I, I didn't even think about this, so I'm going to read you the text. It says, did the city explore refinancing the existing side fund through another bond or loan through a bank? It seems like you are heading straight to get a loan from the gas. The upside to the outside financing is that you would still have the gas money in the bank to loan to the city in the event you need to cover the budget shortfall. Rate would be a little higher through the bank, but not much. I don't believe that it would be as easy to get outside funding if you already obligated your gas funds. So the order that you take the loans could matter. Outside funding gives you more options later. So it's, I think what he's saying is by borrowing from the gas, then we're giving up the only collateral we might have. Is that what he's saying?
Okay, John, I don't believe you can use the gas funds as collateral because they're designated funds. So I think that is what he is saying.
That's what he's trying to say.
But because they're designated funds, you cannot use them as collateral, you can't just give them away. What's being proposed is borrow them, pay back interest, so we're not, the city's not taking them, they're just using them and returning them.
Okay.
Which is why there's a difference.
Thanks for answering this question.
And part of that text, also the dangerous part of that is, he's making it sound like he wants to borrow the money from the natural gas to balance the budget. That's not a good idea.
It wasn't, it wasn't. It wasn't, I was surprised, but it wasn't. Okay, so anyway, no other questions, then I'm looking for, oh, what is it, public, does public have any questions? Okay, looking for a motion.
I, I have a question. So are you saying that the National Gas Department has a surplus of cash in its budget, or?
It doesn't have a surplus of cash. It has cash on hand, because we did a refinance recently, to where our debt service payments went down.
Okay.
So now that we didn't have to pay as much, we have cash on hand. We also have enough cash that we are going to be bringing in August a rate reduction to the rate payers.
Okay, so the natural gas is self-sustaining.
Yes.
And it's generating, in essence, a surplus currently. And so you're looking at taking that surplus and using it to finance yourself. You're going to bail yourself out in another area with the surplus of cash?
We're going to be paying off a higher interest rate debt service that is part of the natural gas.
And you're going to write, you're going to write yourself your, your own loan, basically. Okay, all right.
So, and it sounds like we have a solid plan for paying that back.
We do.
Okay.
Because attached to this is your, is your amortization schedule that shows how much each fund will owe, how much they have to pay back. And there will be no borrowing from the natural gas, and so this one is paid off.
Perfect. And it is acquired loan, meaning you will have to pay it off first. Got that, it's very important that it.
Okay. Counsel, I'm looking for a motion. Remember, we need four fifth.
Yes. Motion to pass resolution number 20-575.
Did you get that? Let's see, second. Okay, all in favor?
I agree.
All opposed? Motion carries. Can we do a roll call, please?
Absolutely.
Counsel member McCourt?
Yes.
Counsel member Mara?
Yes.
Counsel member Stafford?
Yes.
Or vote them more.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, moving on to 9E, resolution number 20-5786, and that's Debbie.
And 9E is a very simple one. We are going to be using our score loss control grant funding to ask our police chief, so it's kind of hard in the city hall, by putting security cameras up, because we have had problems with our drop box trying to be broken into, we've had to replace it. With things that have been going on, Reno City Hall, it's just a good idea, protection for staff, protection for the city's assets. We're going to place cameras in and around City Hall, they're going to be over the cashiers, it's going to be pointed at the drop box, it's going to be pointed at the parking, back parking lot, it's a safety issue. And these loss control grant funds, those, this is what these funds are completely used for, is to prevent loss. The system we're looking at is an expandable system, so more cameras can be added later on, but right now we're just focused on City Hall.
Can I, what system are you guys going to use?
Uh, that's a good question.
I know, I, I was trying to remember what I was reading, I read through it, but I can't find it.
Telecom, it's a wave tower, surder, Pengu, Penguahua. But, um.
Okay. And, uh, so I, I just want to, is it a 4K, is it at least 1080p or 4K?
4K.
4K, okay, that's all I need to know. Just want to be able to see people's faces.
And we, and just, you know, we have to be particular on these, so, um, you know, I, I have another option that I think would be, uh, cheap. But with the laws now, you know, since we're a federal funding agency, we federal fund, there's certain parts that we can't buy from China and other places, uh, so we have to be real particular with what we buy. So although, uh, like we were in a cheap one before this came into effect, the police department, um, you know, we're, we're going to have by substance made in America, so, so, you know.
As long as you, it's not blurry, you're able to see people, it's like this, someone's have that problem, we can't identify, I just want to make sure that we're being proactive. We can actually take a screenshot, identify first.
There'll be PTZs and, uh, at least there, I think, through out of the, and are going to be PTZs, uh, you know, all the way up the basement.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Counsel, any other questions? Public. Oh, wait, counsel, you have to leave? Oh, okay. I can't see.
I was just getting a motion to approve.
Well, we have to ask the public first. Public, any questions? Okay, so I'm looking for a motion, I can see.
Yeah, motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed?
My players.
That's it?
Thanks, Debbie.
Okay, moving on to item line F, it is a campground proposal, and that is in terms of the administrator, Kevin Brown.
Madam Mayor, I'm going to the council, um, you asked me to bring back a proposal for campground, um, I, you should all have gotten the cost breakdown, I know, uh, I sent it out to everyone. I did not, I didn't like it to make copies of it right here. Um, you notice that, uh, that I don't suggest this, it, there's for various reasons. Number one, it would be an incredible cost. Now, in my conversation with Mr. McCourt, and, and first, let me, I attached the, the piece of property, and you can see that's on Spring Ridge Drive, okay, as you look at the top of the page up there. Um, and, you know, Mr. McCourt and I spoke a little bit, that those prices, those quotes that Mr. Gibbs worked up, um, they're, they're a little elevated, there's no doubt, but that's, you know, I wanted to know, I wanted to present you with, you know, the worst case scenario. So there's a lot of things there that maybe, you know, you don't want, you don't need. Uh, you know, at worst, if we're going to do a campground, I think we have to make sure we provide health, safety, environmental issues. Um, so, you know, water, sewer, waste, and so, um, and it has to be safe, and to say, hey, you know, come on, come do this. Um, so I put down 60 to 100,000, I would be utilizing the safety staff, but it still has to be paid, because obviously we can't use them for free because they're, uh, special funds. So, uh, I know Mr. McCourt has some ideas as far as maybe some volunteer to, to break ground on that. There's other things that, uh, that we would have to do. And so the purpose of this today is to see if the majority of the council wants us to move forward. So there's, you know, there's several hours of work in this, and what I, what I asked was, let's put it on, and let's talk about it, and if the majority of the council wants us to go forward, then we will. But I didn't want to continue to put work in something that I, I just wasn't sure if we have the majority of the council behind. So with that, I'm hoping for questions and discussion.
Thank you, counsel.
Well, if you're not in favor of this, how do we get them off the river? What do we do? How do we get them out of the river?
Well, that's a great question, we had a, had a really good meeting today about that. I, I don't know, I just think that it's too far for services. I think that, um, you know, I think we're going to gain some momentum with the county, we met with them today, there's obviously a difference of opinion when it comes to the Boise decision, but I think we cleared some things up today. The county obviously holds the key to some funds, uh, for housing, and I guess what I would suggest before we jump into a campground, I think that when we come back on July 1, and we clean some of the language up on our ordinance, it does offer pivot throughout the city, we just want to address that, that it needs to choose. But maybe try and make some efforts with the county of trying to get those funds that they've allotted to get something, some housing, they, shelter, if you will, whether that is modular, buy a place, build a place, I don't know. So that, I guess that's kind of what, what I want to talk about more, was maybe see if we can progress that, if we can't, then they'll take it more seriously for this. So it's not just, I don't recommend it just because, I don't recommend it, but maybe we can try option B first, and if option B fails, then we come back to it.
So, yeah, so I would like to try option A, B, and C. One thing I've found that we accidentally, you know, we've talked about this, that we accidentally get really good at is waiting. And, um, you know, free now, something over that and so on. We've got some good ideas, logging vegetation, we've got another, the fire department's out, the police department's out, we've got other volunteers, another commitment on Saturday, so things are happening. This campground seems, uh, like, at very least, you know, if we were to just approve this plot of land as a campground, that gives us the opportunity to build on it and figure out how to make it better. All those costs, yeah, we already have volunteers that have stepped up to use their own tractors to carve out campsites, you, we need to do a lot of stuff if we even need to do that, but I camp often, last time I camped was like a couple days ago, ten before that was like 10 days ago, and before that was like 14 days ago. Usually out in the woods every couple nights, in fact, I'm going to be walking the forest tomorrow. Up there, it's beautiful, it's a campsite, uh, we have access to water, we have access to amenities, we've got options, live costs, if you want to have a blue room, or, you know, the sanitation station, water, and this would be fun to consider, there's something like a possibilities project, something where we can empower people. I'm suggesting actually pretty much not really having much staff involved anymore. If we consider this a possibilities project, we can hand it over to some volunteers that can manage this, save staff time, but make people that have their heart and soul in the success of this project, that can manage this to the success. Where we can teach different people how to frame, we've got contractors that have volunteered to help teach people how to frame some of the shade structures and the price breakdown, we've got people that have volunteered to use some of our tractors, we've got, uh, different organizations that are in the group, and then, uh, just talking to the community garden, it could be an extension of the community garden where there's room to grow up there, uh, to actually contribute to something, to be part of something. And the idea goes crazy, but I think that a very simple, proactive, one step forward would be to approve this campsite, and, and at very least, uh, allow the community, the gar, community garden, uh, volunteers who's managing that. For example, Seth is here, and he's got some, some ideas that I think are pretty amazing. Basically, that allows. Basically, it allows people to, I guess, uh, be part of something better than, than what they are. And you, I went up, I've been up there a couple of times. I've actually gone up, I was up there earlier today. One of the people here was up there with me. I was up there yesterday. I've hiked around. Hey, it's incredibly beautiful. It's just, all we really need is just to say, yes, we can make it a campground. And then we really can just wait for the community garden manager to come back to us and say, if you're open, we'd like to consider this amount of money and we think it'll do this. But just having that permission, there's some people that actually do want to solve these problems now, another option. And it's not the solution. That's important to note. We don't have the solution. I'm not sure anybody in the world has the solution unless it's like some dictatorial government and they, they just command it. If there was a solution, we'd all be on board. So I'm for steps A, B, and C. Yeah, we're locking up there on Saturday. We're going to pick up order on Saturday. And we've been doing that. We're making progress and then we've gotten back and COVID happened. This is just another, another, uh, another tool for us. And what if we were the first community in California to really be successful? And you got to remember, we only have eight thousand nine hundred people. So when a lot of things can't be accomplished because we, because, you know, Chicago or New York have so many people, we are like a big high school just with a couple of clicks. We actually can talk to each other and we can all get along, you know, and work together. And I, I can go on forever, but the community garden, if we hand it to them, they can turn it into something with possibilities. This could be the Susan Bill Possibilities Project. And whether, if, whether failed or, or successful, at least we're not sitting there going, geez, I wonder when the county's going to give us five hundred thousand dollars? And, and I wonder when, how long it's going to take to build a shelter? And I wonder how long it's going to take to locate a plot of land, you know, plot of land, blah, 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 blah. Four years down the road, our problem's going to be four years different and we're probably still not going to make it really happen.
Okay. So, so Quincy, are you suggesting, suggesting that we approve it but have no fiscal impact?
Not, no. There's, though, we're, we're probably going to want to afford the, the rental units of like toilets and sanitation stations. But it doesn't have to be the full, because what Daniel Gibbs put together is really great. And actually, it's a good OMA that we can work towards. But I'm suggesting approving it. And then I'm suggesting Seth, uh, with the people that are very into this, bring something back that we say, okay, yeah, maybe we'll approve X amount of dollars for the, for the restrooms. And if people say, hey, we've got classes, like he's got in his, in his breakdown, shade structures. There are trees up there, but shade structures would, would definitely be beneficial. If we could have some of our contractors even teach some of the different people who want to learn, uh, some of those framing skills. I mean, the opportunities, especially talking to Seth, he's got some of the visions, it's just endless. I'm just asking to give him and his, his other volunteers a shot.
If I could jump in just from a legal perspective, I, I would recommend approving something without a plan in place, um, because that creates a problem. It sounds more like you're looking to have the council have a call for, for proposals on how you, um, provide your services that are outlined in the, the staff report that's provided and then analyze that to make a determination of which is best. But you want to make sure you don't approve something without having structure.
So, okay, so structure could have been brought today. What I'm saying is I don't want to wait and put it off. I want to approve the process. I want to approve it and say, hey, we want to have a plan, then let's ask Seth to bring the plan back for next meeting. Let's approve the plan. But I'm saying let's not, as Kevin always says, let's not kick this camp down the road. Let's just be proactive towards doing something. And then let the plan be brought back rather than push the decision. It's a good decision. You know, the people put us up here because we want to try something different. And if trying something different helps things out, great. But if doing the same old thing keeps us the same place where we've been and that's what we want, I see a lot of people complaining. I'm not a complainer. I'm not someone who just sits there and does nothing. I'm always going to be a problem solver, whether that means I don't listen well. I think I do listen well. I think everybody...
Yeah, you can point a word here.
Yeah, I know. It's just, I just want to move forward with that. I see we always push things down the road.
Okay. Other council members?
Yeah, I think I can kind of tie everything up here pretty quickly. Um, I agree with all of what you're saying. However, um, we were all here for the homeless meeting. We saw how many residents are upset and how upset they are. We cannot ignore that. Um, so I am, I would say, this is my tactic. Let's get the piece of property, use the three tractors, right? Get the people to level the property to where it's juster. Do the bare minimum. Get the people out there based on the property and then get staff and other, uh, you know, talk about people and... I'm sorry. Getting people focused to get it going. Then we go back to the county and say, look, we've removed the river ordinance. We can keep the ordinance by saying that wildlife is dying and habitats are deteriorating, uh, which is true. So we can, uh, say, hey, for two years, you can't go down by the river and camp that near it because it's killing wildlife. It takes the focus off the homeless, which will make the county happy. And then we can go back to them and negotiate with that five hundred thousand dollars. And as you know, Home Depot makes those little mini homes that range anywhere from six thousand to fifteen thousand dollars. And then on the very same camping site, we can, if we work with them, we can use some of those funds to place up new homes to where we're in compliance with the state. So this all kind of goes hand in hand. And I'm pretty sure, I did my research, that all of that is entirely real. Um, and it gives us time to, to do exactly what Kevin is saying, exactly what the county wants us to do. However, they're not going to work with us until we get those people off the river. Um, or, you know, and kind of restructure, uh, what the wording in that river ordinance and get the... And we're not going to make the residents happy until, uh, their kids feel safe down there and until we have these residents in a one zone that we all requested six months ago. That's, that's my opinion, um, and so I'll leave that.
Counsel, questions?
Can I, can I respond to?
Yes.
So, uh, appreciate that, but, uh, I, I would agree with Mark, with Mark. I mean, I'm not here to try and get a plan, but this, and I understand what you're saying. And if the council wishes and wants to approve it or approve it in concert, that's why, that's why I'm asking for a vote because to move forward. But it will take staff time. It's not going to be, you know, this more than anyone, uh, council member.
Yeah.
So, so I guess that's why, that's what I'm saying is that that's, that's what I'm looking for. The plans, we can work that stuff out. We can see what, you know, I'm, I'm semi confident there's some, definitely some groundwork we would have to do, uh, some, you know, some research, things like that. It will take that time and that's why I brought it here. And so as far as the action part, we can, you know, it'll probably continue to be on. If the council wants us to move forward, it'll be on probably every meeting until we get something, uh, you know, exactly like planning. So I just want to be clear about that. So, uh, thank you.
Thank you.
How close are you really working with the council?
What, we had a meeting today, Mark? I mean, we did. I, and it was one of the better meetings, I think, that, you know, there was just some... I, I think there's, there's a fundamental, fundamental difference between the opinion that, uh, our city attorney shares with the county attorney. And, uh, they're looking for us, and on July one, you will have that ordinance back for amendment. And they're looking to see a final version. And, um, once that, and, and, you know, I think I'll, I'll bring this along, that way you can hear.
Wow. To answer.
So the question was how would you be in the county? Again, I, I think we're, we actually are a lot more agreement with them than you're agreeing. I think there was just some communication that needed to be done. It was good to get everybody in the same room. Uh, I think the plan that we brought forward, uh, is, is something that my understanding was if they will, if we look at it, I anticipate we'll, um, ultimately be on the same page. So I do think it's, it's going to be really good progression going forward. Uh, the, the Boise case is a very important case to remember when you're dealing with homeless. Uh, there are some cases that have come after that have given us some additional parameters and they're also equally important to consider. Um, and so I do, I do have those available and I'm going to make sure that everybody in the home sees now the Boise case with the interpretation of the Boise case. Um, and then the recommendations from the board about modifications to our camping ordinance, um, aren't, now we'll be, are and will be compliant with the law as written. And I don't, I don't believe there's a, a difference in opinion on that per.
So, so let's just, I mean, if we can just approve that spot to be used and then request that an action plan be brought back in great detail in the next council meeting, then we can pick and choose what part of that we like or don't like. We can absolutely have an action plan back.
I don't know if this allows this, how it's written, I don't know if that allows us to... Well, the next council.
Yeah, we don't want to approve the cost just because there's, there's, uh, yeah.
We're approving for, for him to move forward and then come back with an action plan to which we can then vote upon.
So, so the reason you want to expedite it is so that you can get people up there, right? Is that what I'm going to say? Because I, I don't have the liability to have tractors.
Well, there's, there's a couple of things from a legal perspective about that. One of them being, uh, whether insurance covers it, uh, make sure that they're aware of it and that they don't have any additional parameters. They may have some obligations that we need to comply with. We want to make sure you know about it before we see forth. Um, the other one is if we're going to be using extensive volunteer labor, we do have to make sure we need to save a lot of the relevant wage aspects and we'll think those, those issues as well to make sure we're properly, that we guys work for. So again, my recommendation right now would not be to move forward, to roll the tilt at this point because I don't think we have enough information for you to make that decision. What is here for you is, do you want him to keep coming back to this or do you want to shut it off? That's really the, the two choices that I think are before you today.
Anyone else? No? Okay. Looking for a motion.
Governor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's all right.
Amendment.
Um, I guess I have a question for both the city administrator and the head public boards. So are we going to wait the whole process? No public hearings on this? No environmental impact statement on creating campground? Okay. All of the things going to another public project to expedite this thing moving on?
So, so let me answer it for a second. This is on today for, for strictly, um, so there's been some discussion in the past on establishing a campground. Okay? We've been talking about six, seven months, probably nothing else, maybe even none. Um, there's going to be a lot of forward work on this. So before we start dedicating staff time, I brought this to the council just for a motion to get a majority of the council to say, oh, yes, we want you to continue working on it. So the answer to your question is no. What we, what I'm, what we will get today is direction to the city administrator. We either want you to continue working on it or we don't. And if, if the answer is yes, then you, absolutely. It goes for all the city.
So there's a checklist of all the...
Absolutely.
Okay. I'm good with that.
Okay.
Any other public members? Oh, yes.
I got to hold this. I, I wanted Quincy to see this new camp and all. And as a matter of fact, I have volunteers right now ready to go on up some of the work given. Thing is, there's a lot of people on the river that probably would be encouraged once they see us get up there. There's a lot of stuff on the river that won't go up there for various reasons. And some of it's Chief Jones' remaining. Some of his behavior is probably remaining of behavior. A lot of things like that. I see that place, uh, perhaps becoming, for the moment, an ideal place to get them off the river because that's what I want to. And get, keep the river clean, whatever, and whatnot. How would we enforce it though? Our chief more than just be able to have them go down there and, uh, actually run it back out to. Fire, whatever, and burn, whatever. I think that, um, I can speak for some of us that are willing to become productive people in the community and whatnot. And we're done, all ready to, to change that whole here on it. Make things, get the river clean, get the heat off it, um, and a place to go. It's going to take time, obviously, with all the, all the, you know, the rise and rot, you know, and nowhere. It can be done. And the thing is to use the people that we bring from the river or not to develop a place. And if there's, like the city is partly not having money, well, let's trade the labor, trade maybe food bonds, dollars, help all the big grocery stores in the past. And they will be willing to accept that, uh, for food, you know, for work. And if we could trade it, dollars for the river, save some money. And then there's, I told this, you know, thirty months. By using, uh, not necessarily bars, but tractors and the labor, whatever. I, I see we should give this a shot. Originally, I wasn't for it. I just thought it would be another, like, slack city down south. But if we get the right, um, people, you know, to talk and keep the other people focused. I mean, I spend a lot of time on there every day, up and down, I visit, I go to the other state. And, and I told them, I said, two days, this river deal, it's about to expire. And so there's a lot of pressure for everybody to move. So there's a lot of stuff that I see, you know, forty, fifty, something. But one thing that...
Your last, but I'm going to give you a two minute warning.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
What I would request on behalf of them is perhaps a reason, because I do know that I'm older than many of these people, and myself. Or perhaps a grace create a transition instead of going down there and just, you know, and I'll go down there and bathe in the water, ashore, go there, whatever. But there is a power of worship for people that can do just good. But soon as we get somebody up there, some people up there get this thing started, they will see that we have to be even more encouraged. And yet we still work for that. It's an incentive to play on with, um, to do that. I just think if we're going to get as far as soon as possible, uh, and to start the place, we, uh, put people to work. And then the next meeting, um, see how it goes. And by the next meeting, you'll have an idea. What, what, I mean, how many people, some people are already coming around, but they're waiting about months. I understand. I'm not, I don't mind it, excuse me. But if we keep, keep adding, not too hard. That's why the race and the way we see it, you know, if you got it on, you know, not... But let's do it.
Thank you. Okay. Any other, Mr. Public?
Yeah. Um, in line of all this, sorry, I'm kind of making you and I should have a chat. So last year, unfortunately, you guys did get to see something that we had put together. So I have a, an acre and a half of public facilities in town. So last year, we paid the thousands of dollars to do the application process, um, for, for a facility or complex, is kind of what I called it, that was going to be, you know, emergency shelter, transitional housing, kind of a whole little package to help with this, maybe assist in some of the homeless situation that, that was happening last year. So put it all together, went through the review, this part of the disconnect, um, was told we didn't need a sequel report, got through the planning commission, planning commission approved it. City failed at some juncture to, um, it was supposed to, it was supposed to come to council. City, some juncture failed to do the notice, the six hundred feet or whatever it is within, you know, whatever the, there's a guideline there, you know, those people about what you're going to do. Um, so it was supposed to be on the next agenda because then we had to wait the other thirty days and have it to notice and blah, blah, blah. Well, then a new planner comes in and he's like, well, no, now we need a sequel report. So I'm like, well, we already got it through the planning commission. Can we defer that cost because it's more thousands of dollars? And then see if city council could just look at it. Because if you're not going to pass it, you know, why do a report? But if you were going to pass it, then I'm happy to pay for that report because it would have been a project that we would have moved forward with. Nope. Nobody in the city wanted to do that, uh, or the planner told me that I couldn't. So you gave my money back after spending all those hours on it. And that's kind of some of the ways you could generate money or think outside the box to help get some of these projects going is to maybe make it a little easier or at least all be on the same page.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so.
Thank you.
I'm thinking with, we might want to wait for the liability issue and table this. I mean, until we can hear about, you, you said you could look into it, about the tractor and...
So we, we'll look into that. So we'll look into that again. The question today is, would you like some report or we put city administrator report or would you not like the report? If the answer is yes, then we can bring some tentative information to whatever meeting we're close.
Okay, so do you want a motion to reject?
Motion, whatever the council's.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion, council. All it says is council reject the plan for campground at this location under the action request.
Well, motion for staff to continue working on this and work with the volunteers.
Do you have a second?
Motion to approve, correct?
Motion is approved.
I have a second.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
What, Frank, can I ask a question on this now?
Item 9G is resolution number 20-579 and that is going to...
And Madam Mayor, members of the council, this is a resolution to authorize city administrator to alter the rates of the golf course for the purpose of, you know, marketing promotions. Also, we do have a couple rates. This was in front of you a couple meetings ago and the council actually authorized the pro rate for the annual. But it, and there was, it was very kind of subjective. We thought about, well, can it, does this mean city administrator can't? I wanted to claim that I'd like to have the ability to offer promotional, you know, for example, Father's Day this weekend, do some type of discount. I can tell you, you know, in association with this that we're having really good meetings with, it's not ad hoc committees, just a bunch of friends who care about the golf course. And so we're doing real well. And so a lot of good suggestions have come from those meetings and obviously it focuses around the reduction of the rates. And there's some good points, there's some good points on the comparison of rates around this and things like that. But this would be more so the ability to change rates for promotions for special weekends, but also change the rates to make them more commensurate with the course of the rounds. And so I would ask you to consider resolution number 20-5789, approve the interim city administrator to adjust the dime amount of golf courses.
Thank you.
Excuse me?
5781 is attached because that was the original amendment.
Second.
All in favor? I did ask the public.
You can pull back and ask if there's any public...
I am pulling this back and asking if there are any public comments on this one. Okay, so on to the vote. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. And one thing I was going to want to mention for this gentleman is can you explain why the council does not speak back to him when we talk? Where if somebody stays on the agenda, either we can speak back?
Absolutely.
Okay, so this is for you because we just dare you. I want you to know why.
So the way it's set up is that public comment is an uninterrupted time for them to speak and say anything they want. They have a limited period of time to do that. Councilors should not engage or respond to them during that period of time. If there's anything that comes up to want to respond to later time, you can use, I recommend taking notes if you want to address something that they're talking about. But it is not personal to anyone in the public. It is just the way the procedure is written. That's your uninterrupted time.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item 12, which is continuing business. We're on 12A and it's ordinance number 20-106. Dan Gibson.
Good afternoon, members of the council. This is a continuation of the item of the council. Looked at and declared as a public hearing at that time. There was no opposition, either from the public or from the council. The process that we're proposing is a sort of compliance process. That process basically allows for the creation of laws legally that may have been created illegally at some time in the past. There were some fees that were generated for that process by both public works and the state planner at that time. Typically, we would consider reading the ordinance in full, but I'm asking it would weigh the orders in a second time. So of that, I'm looking for a motion to approve ordinance 20-1026 for notice of violation and compliance. Once you vote on this, I believe that will be enacted within 30 days.
30 days. Counsel, any questions? Public, do you have any questions?
Can I have the ordinance explained just in a brief summary of what it entails?
Basically, it develops a process for someone that is a landowner to come into the city and file an application for a parcel of land that they may have either purchased or inherited that may not be considered legal by today's standards within the government code. And so this is a process to allow the city to review that parcel to see how it was created, if it was created legally and if it wasn't, what that owner would have to do to make it legal so that it could be easily for sale or become an asset or you could take a loan.
So is this just in regards to bare earth or structures?
Any parcel.
Okay, so just as a quick example, if a garage were erected without the permitting process and then you guys would go in and assess what it would take to make it become compliant, basically?
No, this wouldn't, this wouldn't pretend that, this would be strictly for land. It could be developed land or law land, but it would be the land boundaries itself and whether that was actual parcel that was created through some kind of recording with the county or it was just simply a parcel that the county assessed was all.
Right, right, okay, okay.
Anyone else in the public? Okay, counsel, I'm looking for a motion.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to item 12B. It's ordinance number 20-1027 and it's Kevin Jones.
During the March, May 27th meeting, the council provided training on the act of governance at that time. The council requested that we modify the code regarding multiple motions in Rosenberg rules as listed. The ordinance was introduced in June 3, council meetings back for adoption and I'm asking you to adopt ordinance number 20-1027.
Counsel questions? Public questions? Okay, I'm looking for a motion. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, let's move on to item 13. City administrator reports were on 13A and that is the COVID-19 update with James Moore on my end.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. If I may sit here to address you, we'll keep this on brief. Apparently, the team is still in the same holding pattern as you heard at the last meeting with no spikes in cases. And if you're watching the numbers today, we lost another one. So we're down to four active cases and you'll see we're now reporting release, not recovered, and we're not reporting hospitalization and we won't be or any other demographics because those aren't, we felt the team felt those weren't. Didn't have any weight. So what you can take from that is released is released, it's not recovered. Some people are taking 90, 100, 20 days to actually recover. So we would not say that. They would still test positive for, some are still test positive after four months. That's why they have been released. They're released from quarantine or isolation, they're back in the general public. That's what that number means. Today, the team was in the federal prison. They went out and tested at the federal prison. I believe they tested some at the jail. And there was one other site. So we're getting a lot of testing done in areas that we wanted to get testing to look at our statistics, which still look very good for our area. We continue to move forward with our modified plans. We do hear questions from the public. Well, CC says this, state says this. If you look closely, that's all guidance. The health officer of each county has given in our county, his letter of attestation allows him to make verances to those as he sees fit. And that is what he is doing in our county. So if something may not make sense to the, that should be phase four and why is it phase three? It is because the state has allowed our health officer through our attestation and our plan on recovery to do so. Many better that we look at and our numbers, our hospitalization rate, our infection rate and such. That's what drives that. We're in good standing and as far as I know, the team continues to reach out to businesses, trying to obtain a plan. Once they get a plan from the business, they try to either modify it or approve it so that business can open.
So when you say you lost, what do you mean there are a lot of positives?
We didn't lose, we lost one of the numbers. We haven't lost anybody actually. None of our positives were even, to my knowledge, hospitalized.
Okay.
So we are a healthy COVID environment. They feel at home. Sorry for that.
No, that's fine. Appreciate it. Public, do you have any questions? Counsel? On, we're going to go to 13B. And that is the Buxton report from Kevin Jones.
So council member Moore, Madam Mayor, member of the council, council member Moore asked this to be brought back for an update and I am going to refer to Mrs. Whitlock for her.
So unfortunately, not too much to share. With the, with COVID, everything has slowed down. We had a few discussions with a couple, two, sometimes three businesses. All of that conversation has come to a halt, except for one of them. I actually got an email from him a couple days ago and he may actually be in the area in the next week or so to tour the site. So there are still some things in the report, it's just definitely been slowed down. Other things that we, last year, I should say, I was on the phone with her actually this afternoon and just getting some feedback on the changes that we made to the website and how they felt their website would now attract businesses instead of not having anything that would grab their attention. We've been through a way of that. We did also some feedback and some suggestions. And we also discussed where we were at in contract and what we would be going through before. Some of the things I mentioned to them was that as part of you were in contract, you were going to have space in Vegas to match with potential businesses that obviously did not happen. And if they were going to help us for that, what their plan was, they said that they are looking at options of either dividing that same Stacy upcoming here, but she can't say that for sure. She won't get back to me exactly what it is to make up for and not be able to do that show. And the other, the other option, let's see, I'm not option, but she said that she's going to be waiting for a couple proposals for us to consider if we were still interested. We could just opt to just do scouts, which is the data program. She says it's prior to roughly $15,000 to $20,000 if she chose to do that. But then we could still run our own reports and still come up with our own marketing material. That is opposed to the retail improvement package that we purchased last year for $50,000 and now that we went through that, we found what's in that marketing material, we created ourselves using that scout data. And they also said that they're putting a lot of emphasis on the mobile analytics and mobile analysis that they've come up with. I did express my concern with the LSMX program and how we would have issues with one of our individuals not being able to get up and running. And she's now stated that we don't even have a middle person involved in that. I could actually give them a sort of, so she can be hands on in this work to get those issues fixed. So if we wanted to keep promoting that to have other people decide on it, then we can be, maybe we can get those things worked out. And yeah, they said that you're going to, like I said, propose, you know, bring forward a couple proposals so we can decide if we want to move forward or we may be able to get it coming out now and all apart. I think there's certain portions that we don't want, but that's what I'm asking.
Counsel, any questions?
Thank you. I like the idea of that scenario. This probably needs to be, do we have anybody at all to put any significant time to if we chose any of the Buxton options moving forward?
So I think that's probably too far. A would be, I don't think so, but B would be deciphering something and other data. So, and I do think it is interesting that, and I know Heidi and her contact, they played a little bit of phone tag, but you know, typically you think that a vendor who wants to continue business, they're never going to reach out to you two, three months, they won't. And I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think they really, they didn't suggest us renew it. So they gave a couple options, but they didn't suggest us renew another, so I thought that was interesting.
Yeah, so I don't know if I've put a lot of thought into this and I think if you say, for example, Heidi is able to go full time and work with them, that would make sense. But after analyzing that data and seeing what they brought to the table, doesn't, the idea seems proactive, but I don't think we are equipped or have the capacity to actually take advantage of what it has to offer should we elect to proceed with any of their options. So you rocked and you're the city clerk now, right, Flora? So, and I don't know if we want to entertain volunteers or, you know, talk to a couple people in the audience that may or may not have been interested. I don't know, did you even ever use my LSMX?
Me?
Yeah.
No.
So, and we brought it up to some other people. It wasn't overly popular and I'm not sure if that's because we didn't have the staff and availability to market it well or if it just wasn't attractive to the people here. My LSMX, I don't know if that's a reaction, it's a marketing platform. The city purchased one of Buxton to allow businesses in this area to take advantage of this for free. It identifies your customers, both mobile and in the city one that you fill out your profile, it tells you who they are and gives you their info. And then you, you say, I want to spend, I think, minimum of 60 bucks, maybe do Facebook, maybe email, whatever, that kind of thing. But we brought it up to a couple people, there was some interest, but I don't think we went out of business doing that. I mean, I don't think we sold that. I think that we had a handful of people take advantage of this. So other than that, the other question would be, I know members of the public are interested in what we actually got from that and that's one of the things that we wanted to keep a secret so that maybe somebody else would take advantage of the information that we had. And if we might not be renewing that contract, would that be something we want to share being that people want to know on hand? But I would refer to Heidi because there's advantages to not sharing, but one of the questions is we don't have to go into work on it. You know, that kind of thing. Because multiple people mentioned it, it was brought up here, we still, no matter what, need to be proactive and making money on multiple levels. Otherwise, it's just a question of when we go out of business.
So you said something was a secret. It was a secret from counsel as well. Just because you're a former employee who happened to know some secrets.
Yeah.
And can I ask a favor? It wasn't necessarily that you wanted to keep it a secret so that other people wouldn't know what those things were. It's mainly out of respect for those businesses. We don't want to steal their thunder coming out saying, hey, we're going to be here to Susanville. We want them to have that option of being able to, when they're going to be here.
And I'd also say it's not secret. We don't keep secrets in the city just looking at...
Yeah, it's probably the wrong word.
Private information is not subject to disclosure.
I know Tony would be like, hey, man, don't keep secrets. But yeah, we want to share.
Is that all, council member of the court? Okay, anyone else? Public have any questions on this? Comments, yes, please.
So my comment on the Buxton report is I sat through Quincy and Heidi's presentation. I was one of the businesses. I left with questions and to date have not received answers, even after calling for 50 bucks. I really feel that that's not on Mr. McCord or Heidi's plate, it's with Buxton. And a lot of it had to do with the data presented and what it's based on. And if it's based on like populaces or populaces in general. These are things that when I make business decisions, I base on our local demographic and while we can compare them to certain national demographics, we're not all the same. Understanding our local clientele is far more important. And I'm just curious with the report you purchased, this package and all of that, how many new businesses has it generated? How many startups can you contribute to the data performed or presented? Because, I mean, you guys are talking about deficits, deficits, deficits and we shelled up 50 grand for this and got nothing back. And now they're coming and asking for another 20 and if we didn't get anything out of our 50. I'm just being honest here, being a businessman, I don't make a $50,000 investment and get nothing back and then sign up for it again. I just, I just can't do that. It's bad math, in my opinion.
So I could respond to that, counsel. So, yeah, I think that I was there as well. So, yeah, I think that, I was there as well, and I think, you know, the intent of the city was very good.
I agree, the intent was there.
And I think the background was done to, to look at a company, a corporation, that helps you, you know, they're dating service, they're a matchmaker. But I can also say this, I know there was momentum, there was good momentum there. And then this weird thing called COVID-19 came up, and.
This predated it by over a year.
I, I, well, we're a year right now.
Right.
So that's one thing. And there was momentum, I can tell you for a fact. And so, one of the, one of the fears, and it is not, it's not a secret, but one of the fears is to come to a public meeting and say, hey, guess what, Buxton matched us with this, this company or whatever. And then, you know, everyone's, oh yeah, well, hey, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do this. And then something falls by the wayside. When I say that, maybe, you know, they're just interested, maybe it's a good match. And then we keep, you know, keep saying that, but then we don't get that company, we don't get that corporation. So I, I believe, so I, I'm like you, because, you know, there, even city employees, we weren't, we weren't being told not to, not to hide it from us. But there was, you know, the economic development team, they had full awareness of it. And then they would, you know, make these things, and all of a sudden, here comes March, you know? And so there was progress, and I'll say that. I think that it could have turned into some new businesses. And as Heidi, as Mrs. Whitlock said, there's one that is still maybe interesting. So, so I hear you, I don't disagree, but COVID did put a wrench in a lot of things.
So is the intent then of this report to draw corporations and corporate business to Susanville, or independent business?
It's to draw any business to Susanville. I say, I say business or corporation, whatever, I mean, you know, I think it's definitely to draw any business. And at that time, we had essentially three or four people working on it. We had four people working on a team that we now have nothing to do with COVID, that we have zero. And so, that's interesting too. I'm not trying to make excuses.
No, I understand, I just, like I said, from, from my perspective of going through the presentation, from a business standpoint and one that understands my business well. And I'm not necessarily looking to, to grow it in the manner of the information presented. You know, I think there's, from the city's standpoint, there'd be a lot of cold calling based on the analytical data that you have. And so I was just, I was just curious about the fruit that it bore. And I, we can blame COVID for everything, tends to be the thing.
Hundred percent.
But, and yes, it attributes to certain ways we do things, but I really don't think it cuts investment in our town, personally.
Well, no matter what, it doesn't break it down, because we don't have a single staff person to dedicate to it. So that's something strongly to consider too. But I don't know if that's what Heidi was actually suggesting for us to make that decision, but it's more, I think, Councilmember Moore wanted an update. And so it's an update, it's also like the end of her contract, and so she'll be making, we probably have to make that decision or something. But I don't even know if we need to bring it back, because it just doesn't seem like.
The only reason we would bring it back is if we thought there were viable options, if we would recommend it to council. I think that we decided that the lower level, that I don't think that some pursue, I think we could use our money better spent in other places to try and promote the company.
Okay, public, any other questions? Okay, moving on to item thirteen C, which is a discussion regarding city council meeting schedule.
So this is something that I brought, this is kind of more so in consideration of staff. Right now, when we do get back to an informal, I guess is what we're gonna call it, and I don't know when that's gonna occur. You know, we will go back to our six o'clock closed, seven o'clock open session. This is to get the feel of the council to consider a four thirty closed and a five thirty public session. And it is a little easier on the staffs, it's still based available to people who want to come to our open session, public session rather, at five thirty. And so I just, I'd like to get at least some feedback from the council, if this is something that you would like, like you'd bring back. And to have come to form of a major order, things of that.
Thank you.
I'm good with that.
It sounds, yeah, sounds good, I said not, when that's like.
A lot of people have been requesting, when you can go back to later times when I can actually make it, because they don't get off till five, so this is perfect.
But this is better than last time.
Yeah.
So, man, Kevin, not a good thing.
Yeah, I think, I think I got the feel of the council, unless anyone wants to add anything.
Okay. Oh, did the public have anything to say, Don?
That's right, seven o'clock, so.
Yeah, read that. Okay, so moving on to thirteen D, homeless discussion.
Okay, Madam Mayor of the council, this is an ongoing conversation that will have for every council meeting. And this one particularly, we wanna talk about a little bit of the weed shrub removal. I can tell you that I did seek out a couple contractors about, about the possibility of cutting down on shrubs and things like that. And it's not even financially feasible. But, but as Sergeant Sobel's gonna be great, as I've told you before, we have Mr. Cuso. Cuso design, every two weeks flies the river for us on his drone. And he tries to kind of hone in on areas where there might be an issue with camp, or maybe some litter, things like that. And as he gets that ready, I would kind of refer to Chief Moore to talk about maybe the possibility of trying to knock some of that down.
Sure. We continue, Mr. Gibbs reached out to the biologist, fishing game biologist in Redding again. We have heard from him on one occasion. We've met our obligation that he requested to meet. We have not heard back from him with specific direction. So I'm moving forward to write with Cal Fire, LA thirty eight burn plan, we'll get together in two weeks. And that will include a burn plan from along the trail through the river on city property. From our property at the Caltrans easement behind McDonald's to Alexander Avenue. We will, it'll be a prescriptive burn. The plan will be to burn out all the understory and undergrown shrubberies, leave overhead hammies, leave healthy habitat. It's done far and wide, burning is very common. We will treat it as a fire training exercise also. That will help air quality approve the permit. So we are in a good board with that. We'll work hand in hand with other fire departments, Cal Fire, air quality, Canada Police Department. Make sure we get the feel broken for them, get the people notified and moved appropriately. I look for burn in three weeks.
What, we're having some technical issues with the police service, maybe it wouldn't look.
Are we all gonna light up here in a second?
What's that?
Are we all gonna light up?
You are.
Cap, Cap Copper, can you come up and talk a little bit about what it looked like? It is, I think, some, one of the things that came up at our meeting today in regards to the homeless was, I think, the impression that that we are allowing people to, you know, intentionally violate the municipal service. That's not the case. I mean, our staffy level only dictates certain days of the week, certain times of the day, that we can proactively go down there and, and, you know, ask people to leave. One thing I think is real important is that we're not meeting resistance, we're not, we're not happening aside. We have been, we have not been in a situation where we have to decide a person. When we're telling people to leave, they're leaving compliant, we're giving them options, we're, you know, trying to make suggestions to them about where services and things like that. But I defer to Cap Copper to.
Okay, so we're gonna start off, just out of town, kind of keep going without the bridge, going back through town west side. So all this property right here, this Caltrans easement, last year we got a party camp, I think it's like, that's the thing I was gonna pull up. Science posted, and this is what's happened a year later, so. So we'll keep going westbound down the river, kind of towards the.
Turn them off, yeah. Turn them off, if you could.
Turn them off, yeah.
Thanks.
There you go. Okay, so you can see where the highway is, and we're kind of coming up on that lot just east of McDonald's. And all the property right here is all Caltrans easement, so it's not actually in the city. So we're coming off of this, it's a normal thing, we're looking from there, and that's a nice city lobby you passed by there last year. Going back, no moderate metal trash there, no camps like we saw. Keep going kind of westbound, towards McDonald's again. And as we go, there was several camps in this area last year that were cleaned out.
Was it, yeah, was it, was that?
And that's just some trash that, there's no camping there, that's trash, that's actually on Caltrans easement. We'll probably know about that at some point. And we kind of go down. Yeah, there was a big giant camp that last year, lots of trash, signed to post it, and that's how it looked after that. And that again is still Caltrans easement. We'll kind of fast forward a little bit here to McDonald's, which you're right. And as we kind of curve around, across from Starbucks, there's a pump coming up, and there was three, four, five, six, ten tents that were piled up there last year. Now it's all cleaned up, you have part of our insurance, some safety issues, and it's nicely cleared at this point. Now we're going on further west, kind of towards the district attorney's office, kind of behind Safeway. And then as we come up on the right hand side, which is the city, that's, that's in our town, there's a single tent. And as we zoom in here, it's kind of cool, we'll zoom in, give you a close up of what it looks like, there we go. So when we watched the video, we got it from Mr. Cuso, we watched the video, reviewed it, and at this point, I started to sort myself on the fire department. Went down, we contacted the deputy, and we took some pictures of what it looked like on the ground another, this was yesterday. So that's what it looked like, not, we see worse, actually kind of clean camp, but still, at that point, we contacted one single消防队. Asked her to move on, she ultimately did, she packed up her stuff while we stood by. The fire department came down and kind of cleared some brush just for, for safety issues, for future purposes. And that's what it looked like afterwards. And if you go back, we're kind of seeing the fire pit at that point, at that point. So the camp's cleaned out, but this is what, what's going on for these fires down there, which are, I'll say tremendous fire hazard this time of year. And every camper coming across, someone has come to the fire pit to move on. So this is what we're showing you right there. And that's what it looks like from the top of the road, looking down towards the river. Now it's kind of cleaned out, you can kind of see down in there, and that camp was always at that. And now another camp pops up, you can see a few of them, and you can access the facility. Another picture of us firing, and then the fire department working. Yeah, to make sure. So that was the camp that came across yesterday, this is a picture of our vehicles, us looking at the fire department, the team trying to get this knocked down. And differentiate between how angry the team is going to happen with the fire department. So we'll continue moving westbound. This big camp is not gone, no one's in there, it's cleaned up. All right, continue eastbound. Going down.
Next to the big tree there is multiple camps last night.
Yeah, up there on the right hand side, big camps everywhere, that's no camps at all. Now, the left side of the river, that's, that's in Delph County, middle property. And people have in the last year or so, sort of little camps on that side of the river. In a minute here, you see a camp on your left, and there's some people walking from out there, in the middle property right there. And that's just some trash.
That's great.
Yeah, but then it comes kind of back here, just a pile of trash. And here's the, you see a guy walking on the left there, walking down the camp right here on the left. So basically what they've done is they moved to the other side of the river, so they're not contacting us like that long question.
So that's not city, man?
It is not.
Okay.
So at this point, there's the dam, we're moving forward, face the bike path. We have a mini mall shop inside there, towards the courthouse. As you can see, there's not much going on there. This guy's cleaning, he's going up to the bench. And we keep going. Now coming up here on the right, it is gonna be on the trail side of the river, but there's a little stretch of property that's on that side, but it's actually in the county. Quarter mile stretch. And we'll get to that in a second, and that's where this is going on, there's a camp there. So it's on our side of the river, but it's actually a little stretch, it's kind of weird how that's county property, but on that side of the river.
County, you're saying?
County. So I have to go on, keep going west down here. The fire control desk over there is promised to go on, right about here. Now this is the most stretch of property that's on our side, but not really our jurisdiction.
This is, this is the area that we get the most complaints on. And one of the things that we're, you know, hopefully we can work with the county on, is what'll happen is people will call the sheriff's office and say, you know, there's people camping or there's a little, they're not responding, but I'm hoping that yesterday after a conversation that I had, that they will now call and say, hey, someone's trespassing, because that's on, that's on Nobles property.
We're gonna just jump ahead, going westbound, Billy Field, coming up here.
And as of today, Mr. Nobles is on board with the post signs and notified the sheriff's office that he has trespassers, that we'd like them removed, but yes, assigned.
So on the right hand side here, Billy Field, on the right there amongst those trees. And as you go over the river to the left, you'll see a camp here, kind of hidden out amongst the trees, there it is. And that's actually what Chief Nobles said on the middle property, so we can work on posts and no shots passing through, and kind of work on different, all of that property. And that's it, so, there's always a bridge, and a big difference from here.
Thanks, Kevin.
There it is, we're almost at the end. Okay, so about a year ago this time, we had fourteen camps on that same stretch, compared to four now, one which was in the city, which is now not there anymore. Now a camp, a trash, a third of the men, as you guys saw on the video. Most of the campers welcomed us, came up, actually helped us, yeah, assisted us. Majority of the campers who contacted the local resources, talked about stuff, gave them hats, very few people taking them. We made the party to give the individuals campers and give the assistance to be home. As of now, as of yesterday, we have two little active camps in the city. A year ago, approximately thirty to forty people lived on the river in our neighborhood. So kind of a limit there. And I think a lot of that comes with the signage, I don't know, council board, the signs up, we dropped out, Caltrans put signs up, just word them out. And I did reach out to fishing game, and finally I knew somebody who was willing to jump on board. For the next time we do a major cleanup, they will come out, guarantee me to build tissues, pretend it's waterways, and maybe your station, then how many people. So that's a contact that we made, and we're definitely doing that. Hopefully we have to put out there, um, how we're coming.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
It looks really good. I have a question. I mean, we get, I explained this to, to the administrator down. But there is a time in life, you'll remember, I think, where they did no littering, they were white signs sharing a black letter, do you remember that? Okay, and then they had the fine on how much it costs to be littered. And I still remember that, and it was years ago, right? You're probably too young, but.
Is this a thousand dollars? Wasn't it a thousand dollars?
I think five hundred, I think five hundred on the old side.
So I mean, that just might be something that the Cal down there.
So I think a couple of things, I would agree, I started a little laughing on Mr. Port's thought a couple of meetings ago, was I would, I think it would be good, I'll bring it back until I want to adopt, however we want to call it, adopt section, or whatever, but you know, kind of do similar to what Caltrans does on, you know, adopt highway. You know, we get ten, fifteen people to adopt the section of that trail, then if you don't have them, well, I'm sure we'll still have to pick up, it is cleanup days, but I think it will be significantly better, maybe organizations even, I mean, you know, I don't know how we'll break it down, but we'll break it down somehow, I'll bring it back to the next meeting. Because I really, I think that's a really good idea, and I don't, I don't dispute, I think we should do, go live and sign and things like that. And in addition to that, Mr. Gibbs has acquired four trash cans. Four trash cans, I priced a few out, a very nice trash can, you know, they're real heavy, they're agit, looking gravel type thing, they're about four hundred pounds. Talked to Dow about how we would place them, so probably end up at least getting a couple, two or three, or we have maybe six to eight full on the trail. And so a couple of things moving there. But yeah, signs are not, I mean, if we go get a quality metal sign, I affirm quality metal sign, they're a little more expensive, but the signs that I got for the, the camping ordinance, currently it's about fifteen bucks a piece. So there's, there's some things moving there.
Any questions or comments on that? Okay, public, questions or comments? All right, we're meeting, moving on then to item fourteen, which is future council items, do you guys have any future council items?
Should we do section eight, I said section fourteen?
Yeah, I think you're good there.
That's confusing, you know.
I know, but we get confused. Martin's going to straighten one out, I'm sure. Okay, so seeing that, I'm asking that we, and we need a motion to adjourn. Thank you for coming, twenty July 4th.